Hello, me and the board, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, the United States of America, and to the three hundred and forty states, states, and one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Donald, will you please take your call?
Jamie?
Present.
Clark?
Here.
John?
Here.
Jason?
Here.
Alicia?
Here.
And me, Donna, here.
Thank you. Everybody is present. First action of approve the agenda, motion.
So, second.
Motion by John, second by Clark, to approve the agenda. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Vows, carries. Announcements. The next school board meeting will be on Monday, July 11, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. in the GSL High School Community Room 443, 444. Amy Donalds.
I do have a couple of them. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Malay Metcalf and Connor Holloway for their performance at the state track meet. Congratulations to them. Malay took fifth place and Connor took fifteenth. We'd also like to acknowledge and wish Zach Meyer nothing but the best at the state golf meet. Congratulations to our baseball team for a section of runner-up performance. And also want to say thank you to Glencore Regional Health Services. They helped provide COVID testing for our kids that were at, trip on abroad, and it was very helpful for them to get that done. So, a special thank you to GRHS. And then finally, just a acknowledgement and a congratulations to the class of 2022. We had a great graduation ceremony. I want to say thank you to all the people that were involved in that.
Thank you. Are there any other announcements or acknowledgements? No reports and presentations. We'll move on to administrative committee reports. This is manager, Senator.
I think most of my stuff is on the agenda, so I think I'll address it all at that time, if that's okay, unless somebody has another question right now.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Fraca.
Good evening. It's nice to see you all here this evening. I'm going to go through a few of the highlights that Bill and I put together. Halfway down the first page, we're excited for our themes for the upcoming school year. World changer at Lincoln and a fresh start at Lakeside. Very appropriate as we're coming back to normal times, hopefully. We're excited to have the peaceful bus program implemented on the buses. We've been working with Mr. Sanju and 4.0 on some exciting things coming next year with meeting with bus drivers, some opportunity for some really positive things happening. Summer programs, which is three quarters of the way down, we have some excellent opportunities for our students for summer learning. Summer bridges is going to be running from June 20th to the 28th along with the migrant program that we have. Tutor Academy Kickstart in camp kindergarten. All excellent opportunities. And for summer bridges, we have some super cool field trips that we're going on, Minnesota Zoo, shoot some ladders in the cities, some swimming, some great opportunities again for the kids to not only get that academic support and enrichment, but also to just build some emotional and some bonds with their peers and with the staff. And then we'll go to the back and then I'll highlight, at this time, we do not have Minnesota Dream Corps applicants, and Bill is more aware of the title grants. We can give you information about that. And also, I want to just highlight some of the end of the year excitement. Lakeside and as well as all of the students got to do the celebration day with Mr. Sanju and all of the staff, which was certainly a highlight for everyone. We did several things just at Lakeside and at Lincoln, I know, celebrating our students and our staff at the end of the year. And then also, the big highlights would be the graduation for sixth grade as well as kindergarten. And then acknowledgements of a very special, huge, humongous thank you to Tammy Veridka as being the fundraising coordinator and also being on our leadership team. She's been on the leadership team at Lakeside for so many years. It's pretty outstanding, even bringing fresh ideas to the table, and we just thank her for her service. And she's greatly going to be missed from those positions, but glad we get to keep her as a teacher for many more years. Any questions?
Here you go. Mr. Fox.
Good evening. So, I'm going to talk briefly about some of the same things that Joy did here with our summer programming. Today was our first day of summer programming, both at the junior high and the senior high level. Today, at the junior high level, we had seven students attend with four more that will be coming tomorrow for a total of eleven during our first session. Eleven may not seem very high, but I do want to remind the board that last year we had three total throughout the entirety of the summer. So, eleven in the first session, and we have 21 registered in July as well. Some of those students are doubled, so it wouldn't be 11 plus 21, but I do believe that we're going to end up servicing about 25 junior high students this summer, which is great. Senior high students, today we had 33 students attend our Accelerate to Graduate program, which is a credit recovery program. I expect that number to hover right around 25 to 40 through all the two sessions that we have in June and July here as well. I talked a little bit about staffing last month. I kind of want to update you a little bit as to where we are. We did have a couple hirings, fortunately, but we are still looking for special education, which includes potentially some of our ESY services this summer. We are looking for an ESL teacher still, a senior high English teacher still, and then obviously, some of our paraprofessional support staff always seems to be in short supply as well. Those are our academic needs, kind of our extracurricular needs that I didn't put on here, but I'll talk about real briefly. We are looking for a junior class advisor, which is prom. Mr. Sanju and I got to do that once a couple of years ago, so I'm sure all of the students are hoping that's not us again, but it might be. Junior high student council advisor as well as a national honor society advisor. So, those are our current openings at the 712 level. Kind of talking a little bit, and I know it's summer and we just finished a school year, but I want to talk a little bit and look forward to next school year already. I want to take kind of a collective approach to move a focus of being reactive, to be more proactive, to changing the culture that we have at the 712 setting. We've talked a lot throughout the school year. This was a difficult year, and there's no getting around it, and I don't need to rehash some of the things we've talked about throughout the school year. But some of the things that I want to focus on is reducing the amount of suspensions that we've had. I don't believe in suspensions. I talk to my staff every month when we have meetings. I've talked to my students regularly in interclass meetings. I don't like suspensions, but this year might have been record setting, the 712 setting with some of the behaviors that we've had. So, I want to focus on how can we reduce this? What are some things that we can do differently to meet the students where they're at? How can we increase motivation, both academically and just wanting to be at school? Truancy was a big issue this year with many of our students. So, how do we motivate the students to want to do better, whether that's academically or just personally in the building? And then how do we build rapport amongst our students, amongst our staff, amongst our families? How do we work more cohesively together? And some of the things that I'm looking at here is obviously, we're going to utilize our leadership team. We've always done that in the past, both the junior high setting as well as the senior high setting. We're going to use our PBIS team. That's something that was really heavily implemented two years ago. This past year was difficult. We did carry on. We had some PBIS carnival activities. We did bring back our junior high student of the month activities during try three. But something new, not necessarily new, revamped that we're going to try, and I know emails went out, K-12 today, but as a parent advisory group. And I know some of you that are parents that have students at my level or at Joy or Bill's level, emails went out today at about noon that just basically said, this past school year was really difficult, and we're looking at how do we change some of those things? And how can we look at things differently? And if you, as a parent in this community, want to be a part of that, we would love to welcome you in to have some meetings throughout the year before school and at the end of each trimester of what's going well, what's not going so well, and what are some things we can improve upon. And the email was sent today about noon, and the response has been really overwhelming, which has been exceptionally refreshing to see. I think at my level, I've got about 40 responses already, and I was hoping to get 10. So, that's been awesome. You know, I was looking at maybe capping it, but I don't know that I even want to. I think if we have parents that want to come in and they want to talk about this and they want to be involved at a bigger level than just their own child, I think that's a great thing. And I think it's a great thing for our school, and I think it's a great step to kind of address the things that I talked about just a moment ago. So, those are some of the things that I'm thinking about and looking at for the 22, 23 school year. Some of the acknowledgements that I want to talk about, obviously, we had graduation to begin in June. Mr. Sanju talked about that already. It was a great graduation. If you guys attended, you probably saw that we had an exceptionally full house. It's the first year that we didn't issue tickets for families to arrive, and it was a blessing and a curse all at the same time because, boy, did some students bring a lot of family members, which was fun to see, because graduation should be a celebration of an accomplishment. And I never understood living in family to be able to see that, and it's always been a hard conversation when somebody calls and says, hey, can I bring, you know, my aunt and uncle, they've been really important in my life, and I'd like them to be there. So, this year, we tried, and we tried not to do tickets, and it was full, but it wasn't unmanageable. And I was really thankful for the parents and the families that were accommodating to that and probably squeezed a little bit tighter than they were more comfortable with, but we did all fit. I would like to thank with all the individuals that helped, and that goes all the way down to Brady and his crew of getting the mats down and setting up, to Jeff Irison and Pete Gepson for playing, and just the parents that were supportive of what took place. So, thank you, everybody who helped there. And then also want to recognize our top 10%. I've always talked about that since I've been with GSL. That is an accomplishment. That's something to be proud of. I know we recognized them during the ceremony, but I also want to publicly say their names here tonight as well. So, our top 10% this year from the class of 2022 was Mariah Wendelik, Elizabeth Schnee, Malay Metcalf, Alyssa Zelman, Abby Gruber, Lea Nettic, Ashley Wise, Elise Fetcher, Kendall Guerrero, Kyle Hagan, Nathan Stoltenberg, Jacob Baumgartner, Jacob Baumgartner, Zach Wright, Colin Munoz. Becoming a top 10% is not something that you decide upon partway through your senior year. That's something that takes effort from the beginning of your ninth grade year and commitment and wanting what's best for yourself and the school around you, and I think it's really important that those individuals are recognized. So, any questions for me tonight?
All right. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, and good evening. I'd like to start off by first recognizing that we had our staff recognition day on the day after our last day of school with our students, and we handed out our recognition awards that have been nominated by fellow staff members. For the distinguished staff member award winners, they were Lisa Cufold, Sarah Beckman, Rebecca Patchwitz, and Emily Kemerza. And then for our community support awards, we ended up having Bob Schrenke, who is one of our custodians, and Tony Menk, who is our food service director. And then we also recognized Michael Foods. Michael Foods has been a very big supporter over the last several years of donating the breakfasts, not only for some of our staff development workshops, but also for the senior breakfast that we have the last couple of years before graduation practice. So, I wanted to say thank you to those people. Now, we talked about last couple of months about the CRP. That is going to be, that's going to be planted on Wednesday, and wish them nothing but the best on that to get that up and running. And then also, the early childhood update. We've got an agenda item, so I can save a little bit of it, but we're still working on our transportation and details. Michelle and I have met, and we kind of worked out a price point for families to, that if they want to use the district's transportation, that we have this price guide that we'll be able to send out to them. And then, you know, obviously saying to them that if you need transportation, number one, you can go through the district, here is the cost, or number two, you can provide it yourself. And then the third option is, is that if you want to use the Trailblazer transit system, and we work with Trailblazer to be able to provide that choice. That's totally up to them whether they're going to use that or not. Also, working with Mr. Munchall a little bit on PAC program that's going to help families if they need to drop their kids off before school or after school. They can stay a little bit later to be able to have that option to help with that transportation thing. And then we would work with, you know, all the transportation people in the middle of the day, just like they normally have in the past. So, my plan is to email families and let them know, and then ultimately, reach out to each one of them and get them, you know, set up so that they know exactly what, and we know exactly what method of transportation their child is going to get to preschool and back. And so, we'll get all those details taken care of. So, it's been a lot. I want to say thanks to my support staff in the district office for helping me out a lot with that. Being the director at this point in time has been a busy timeframe, but I think we're moving in the right direction, and we can talk a little bit more about that when we get to the agenda taking as well.
Thank you. Any questions for Chris or any, do they have any community reports? No. All right. This time, I'll ask for approval of the consent agenda. Motion. By Alicia. Second. Second by John. To approve the consent agenda, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Both same sign. Motion carries. No old business at this time. New business, agenda item, or item number eight, or eight. Meal prices for 22, 23, action item. Do three requirements participate in the national school lunch program. We are required to increase prices by 10 cents for next year. Free breakfast for all students will continue. Prices for 22, 23, school either as follows. Meal 45, increase of five cents. Kindergarten, $15 per year, that's an increase of $4. Raise 1 through 6, film, $26 for half a year, $52 for a full year, increase of $2 per year. Snack cart, K through 6, $31 for half a year, $62 for a full, increase of $2 per year. Breakfast free for all students. Adult breakfast, $2.50, increase of 50 cents. Lunch, K through 6, is $3. 712, $3.20. Adult is $4.20, increase of 10 cents per. There is additional charge for seconds and à la carte payments. Do you have a motion?
So.
Motion by Clark. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alicia. Do you have any questions or comments?
I have a question. Now that we're going to be charging for lunches again, we, then, does this help with, I think it's a two-year hiatus, or is it a two-year plan, or the three for our free and reduced school lunch, you know, where kids qualify? I mean, it qualifies for title programs.
Yep. So, this will definitely make a change again, that families have to do the application for educational benefits, and that determines our compensatory funding and our title programs. That's why we've seen such a big drop the last couple of years in both of those areas, because parents cannot yet complete those. We were kind of, you know, waiting to see if our state legislators would make any changes to give the districts more money towards the lunch program, and being they haven't held that special session yet, at this point, we, you know, we need to move ahead with getting these prices set. So, if something changes yet, you know, that could still be changed. One thing I want to add, we could get by possibly with not doing a 10 cents increase. We could go less. But our fear is because of the higher, the increased food costs that's gone so drastically on the cost of fuel, I think if we don't make this change, another year from now, we'd be looking more at a 20, 25 cent increase. I think this is a better way to get something to help us. And when you really look at, say, a high school student, for example, they can get a breakfast and a lunch for $3.20 for the day. An elementary student can get breakfast and lunch for $3 for the day. It's a pretty good deal, you know, if you look at what those food costs are in the, in the stores right now. And we're really hoping that we see an increase in some of those summer food. Students that come and eat as well, so we want to stress that, to come and eat the summer food program. It'll be both at Glencore and at Lakeside. So, we're trying to help families out as much as we can. So, as soon as we get that application available from MDE, we're going to get that sent out to parents that are going to start applying early. We usually get that about mid-July or so that they release it so we get ready for our newsletter and newspaper and stuff. So, yeah, hopefully, we'll see that. Now, we don't know if it goes with that application, what the poverty lines are changed to, because when they start changing, increasing those poverty levels, then that also affects who might qualify. So, it's going to be kind of starting all over again after not having it for the two and a half years, so.
Any other questions? I have motion by Clark, second by Alicia, to approve meal prices as listed above. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign. Motion carries. Item B, approval of student handbook, action item, enclosure number two and three, included with the school board package are parent, parent-student handbook for 22, 23 school year for the board review. Two handbooks have been prepared, one for elementary students and one for secondary students. Superintendent Sanju recommends approval of the handbooks. Do I have a motion?
So.
Motion by John. Do I have a second? I'll make that second. Any questions? All right. I have motion by John, second by Jason, to approve parent-student handbooks for 22, 23 school year. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Item C, approval of facility handbooks, action item, enclosures four, five, six, and seven, included with the school board package are facility, faculty, excuse me, faculty handbooks for 22, 23 school year for the board review. Four handbooks have been prepared, one for elementary staff, one for secondary staff, one for all district staff, and one for substitutes. Superintendent Sanju recommends approval of the handbooks. Do I have a motion?
Just a question for Matt on the senior high handbook. When you talk about reducing suspensions, is there anything in that handbook that you're proposing to change, or how are you going to philosophically work with that if a student commits something that would result in suspension?
Nothing in the handbook that's changed, because I don't want to be bound to what's put in the handbook, but I am, I am working with staff. We have leadership. Last week, we talked about a couple of different things, and kind of what we're looking at is to try and play a little bit with supervisory for staff to potentially get an in-school suspension program. I don't want to be bound to that, because there are certain things that I just don't think are going to work with an in-school suspension program. I also don't want to be bound to that, because there's a lot of hoops that have got to be jumped through in June, July, and August here to potentially get started for September. But that is something that I'm working on right now. You know, I was going to talk to the board officially about it in August, but since you asked a question, Clark, I do see the state coming down in the next year or two, where out-of-school suspensions become not an option. And I don't want to be reactive when that happens. And we, we had a lot of suspensions this year. We had 111 suspensions this year at the 712 level, and that 111 took part across, I think, 93 students. So, 93 separate students over the course of the year decided to do something that was so egregious that they were asked to not come back for one to 10 days. And I just, I don't blame the students. I don't blame our approach as a school. I kind of blame just where they are right now, coming off of a pandemic of a year and a half of really uncertain times. And I think when we send kids home, they go back to that environment that taught them the behaviors that got them suspended in the first place. And I don't think that's beneficial to this district, and I don't think it's beneficial to this community. So, I'm working with my staff of how can we keep them here? How can we, we talk to them about their decisions that they've made, and how can we hold them accountable for those decisions while still actively helping them academically, and then get them back into the classroom once we've had a chance to talk to them for a couple of days and then move. So, officially, is there a change in the handbook? No, but it's because I don't want to have to call parents for, you know, fill in the blank, whatever it was, and say it's going to be an out-of-school suspension, and then say, well, you have this ISS thing, it's in your handbook, why are we not doing that? And I would hope that one day, as a district, as all districts, not just GSL, but all districts have a program that's, that's very defined and set, and that's where kids go, because I think learning doesn't stop at just academics. I think learning is behavioral too. But right now, those are the steps that I'm taking. Did that answer your question? I feel like I rambled a little bit on that one. Okay.
Any other questions at this time? Do you have an idea of motion? Motion by Alicia. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by John. To approve staff handbook for 22, 23 school year. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Item D, 22, 23, and 23, 24, proposed school calendar change, action item, enclosure number eight and nine. Leaking of our committee is recommending to revise the 22, 23, and the 23, 24 school calendar. These calendars include the spring break during the final week of March. It also provides an additional team planning day during August of 2022 and 2023 as part of the contract. Progress days will be used for grade seven through 12 in lieu of winter and spring parent-teacher conferences. Elementary parent-teacher conferences will remain the same. End of the try, student contact days will be half-day of students in court, half-day of school for students. Graduation and start of school remains the same, as well as total number of contractual days for the staff. Do I have a motion? I'll make a motion.
I'll say.
I have motion by Jason, second by Donna. Do I have any conversation or questions?
I said in the week before in that meeting, and it's just like anything new, just like anything new, there's a lot of questions, a lot of concerns, different concerns, individual concerns or major concerns. I think it's one of those things where I think we, I think we pull ahead with it and try it, and then we have to work on if what worked or if it didn't work. But I think, I think it was, like, everyone agreed, Mr. Fox was there, and he talked about the parent-teacher conferences on the seven to 12 grade level, and how this change will be beneficial, hopefully, to making those more productive and having staff be able to have time to target certain students who are needing to have it. I mean, I, Mary and I, you know, we attend every conference that we possibly can, not necessarily because she needs it, just because we're building up the relationships with the instructors with ourselves. You know, maybe if this stuff does come up, they feel comfortable at that, yes. But I think in the end, I think it's going to work. I'll meet you first, and I, I just, I didn't have much to say. I just sat there and listened to everybody, but it was a good discussion, and hopefully, in fact, this is a positive step in the moving direction.
So, instead of the conferences for 712, we're just looking at progress days? That's what you're calling it?
For only the winter, and then several years ago, we had a spring conference, but we changed that, you know, a few years ago to target and allow teachers to have time to target those kids. So, we didn't have an actual physical parent-teacher conference in the spring. The fall conferences will stay the same. So, that doesn't change. But we felt like this would be a welcomed opportunity for, for staff to be able to have some designated times, six times a year, to go and out and reach out to families. And we think it might be a better use of their time, and I think we can get some more done versus having them be in the library, hoping that families come, and a lot of times, we didn't have the attendance that, that we would like to have had. The elementary staff, you know, reflected on everything, and their attendance is really good. They have a high, high, high level of attendance, and they felt like we just want to keep ours the same. In terms of the days, what would happen with them, the only thing that they're losing out now is that daytime conference that would be in October. And, but that was attended by about 20% of the families, from what I was told. So, you know, yep, it's going to be a little less time for them to, to get that stuff in, but hopefully, they'll be able to make that work.
So, you know, yep, it's gonna be a little less time for them to, to get that stuff in, but, but hopefully they'll be able to make that work.
And I found out the state, it was ninety-five percent?
If not, even a little higher.
Even higher.
Yeah.
That's what the, the elementary has for attendance.
So they're, they, they didn't wanna change things and, and so we didn't change them.
They'll have two nights in October, seventeen and eighteen. I'm just looking at twenty-two.
Yep, yep. And in years past, that next day was designated as a staff workshop day for seventh through twelfth grade, and then it was a, a parent teacher conference for, for K through six. And again, the data that we received was about twenty percent was, was during that time. So there's, I think, three, four parent teacher conferences had to be held during that day. So that got changed to a student contact day. And, and when you look at the contract, there's a total of a hundred and seventy-three student contact days. Traditionally, we have a hundred and seventy-two. But one of the things that we wanted to do for our staff is to still give them that half a day of, of grading at the end of each try. And so one little logistics that we're gonna have to, you know, thank parents for, and I get that this is a little bit of an issue, but it's the Fridays at the end of each try, we would have school until noon. And then we would have, you know, the kids would be going home at noon. And, and then our staff would have that time to finish up their grades. And then when you look at it from a, you know, student contact day compared to the end, the days would be a hundred and seventy-two and a hundred and seventy-two. So that would be still equal. I get that it's a logistical change in some of the parents, but we're gonna have to communicate that and hopefully give them time to prepare for that. And we will have our ACT program available for families that are, you know, in their, their child care age, available for them. So we'll be able to help all of that from that aspect. Just to give you a little history of, of, you know, if you wanna ask, why, why did this happen? It was just a lot of, of informal conversations from people saying, why don't we have a spring break? Why are we not doing that? And so we took a look, look at, Tricia helped me, and, and we looked at, at putting this in. How can we do that that still would allow graduation to stay the same and to have our start time be the same? And in order to make it all work, we would have to put a couple of extra days into August for, for planning as opposed to having a full workshop date during, during the school year. Obviously, pros and cons with that, but in order to ultimately make that work, this is the give and take that has to happen. So we brought it back to meet and confer, had great discussions. Their recommendation is to, to move forward with it.
Chris, I just have a question. Did you say there's six days in there that, that, is this just seven, twelve then when you're supposed to commit to families or students? Or what, how's that work?
Are you talking about the workshop schedule then? So the workshop schedule shows that there are four days, right, in August?
No, no, I'm talking about progress days. Progress days. Are those on the calendar now?
Yeah, they're, they're highlighted in, in orange. Do you have the right calendar?
Well, no, I got one in black and white and one in covered.
Okay, so that would be the, this would be like the second Monday of every month, starting in November, December, January, February, March, and April. You see the, the highlight?
Fourteenth, twelfth, ninth, thirteenth.
Thirteenth, thirteenth, thirteenth.
So when, when would, when would a seven, twelve teacher do this progress?
Traditionally, it would be three-thirty to five-thirty is what we would ask. But we would also have to give some flexibility for coaches, and then they would theoretically finish it from five-thirty to seven-thirty.
And so is this phone, is this?
All of the above.
Any way they contact and communicate?
Meetings, you can have scheduled meetings, you can email, you can phone. You can schedule it in advance. I mean, you can say to families that, hey, let's schedule the same time next month to meet, to see how things are at. We're gonna allow staff to have that, that, that flexibility and that schedule. And the hours that, that we're asking them to come in and work, you know, are the equivalent to the same hours that they would be at a normal parent teacher conference.
So maybe in the past, when we had spring break, you know, years ago, it was, being on board at that time, we had probably half liked it and half didn't, which is where you never pleased it, okay? Well, I don't know if it is the case here, because in, in those days, if we had spring break, graduation got pushed back, which, which was the feedback that said, we don't like spring break because we wanna be done by that first part of June. Which, I mean, I appreciate this, that we don't change the graduation date, and we don't necessarily start earlier. But it just fills out, I'm trying to wrap this in my mind, what happened in between? You know, what, what days are you now using as contact days?
So ultimately, we also, there was a few years, we research it back, we went to school after graduation. And I think that those days are much better used before graduation. So that was the, that was the key. And so in the end, we ultimately are taking student contact days, putting those onto workshop days for a few days. And then those workshop days are beginning placed in August. And then we're taking a couple of days from the Easter holiday and moving them towards spring break. And instead of having that, that three-day holiday or that four-day holiday that we've kind of designated as our spring break, now the only day is, is Good Friday. And so when you take those days and you put it in, why didn't we choose the end of March? Two reasons, number one, that's kind of when all of the winter stuff is done. And I know that it's, you know, a couple of weeks after the try and, and, and those types of things. But when you look at the following year, that same week corresponds with Easter. And for allowing us to be consistent, and I get that every year it's not gonna be consistent, but for the next two years, that would allow those, that same timeframe frame so families can plan. And it would just make logical sense to have our spring break be around Easter when Easter is available at that time period, if that makes sense.
And then we have two storm days, which would be, your first would be digital, third would be made up on February fifteenth, thirteenth, if we need. I'm just looking at twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yep.
And at the end of the year, we do have one grace where we could go to school on June second if we had a bad winter here, but rightfully we don't, so.
It, like I said, just trying to answer to the, what I've been getting. And it was worth to pursue to meet and confer. And I think meet and confer that said, yep, this is, this is worth coming to you guys, which is why it's, which is why it's here.
So the Fridays are going to be half-days, but come to us full student contact days?
Correct.
So, I'm sorry.
They're here until June?
Right, so they're here a half-day, but we're counting them as a full day. So actually, we are kind of losing student contact time with, with students on dates because we're counting a full day even though it's really a half-day. So we're losing some time with students.
Unless you compare it to last year. Because it's a hundred and seventy-two and a hundred and seventy-two. Now it's a hundred and seventy-three. So you're right, it's just how you wanna look at it.
So I guess a couple of concerns that I have is that we, we've had the conversation, you know, during the pandemic and stuff, both in place of having kids in school versus online and so on. And so here comes an opportunity where we're counting a full day of contact, when it really isn't a full day of contact. So we're losing some contact time with kids. Another concern that I have is the fact that I don't know how many people questioned or wondered about spring break. But I guess not gathering information from families that might be impacted by trying to come up with coverage of their families, other students on those half-days prior to making a decision like this, concerns me. Like I said, I don't know how many people questioned about why we don't have a spring break. But I think that maybe we have less of this information to share, people that have concerns about coverage of their children. And so, you know, if one group of individuals is more important than the other, or they heard more than another group because one was came forward first asking a question, and then we're making adjustments, looking and researching it versus and is that reactive response after a decision taken?
All right, we have a motion by Jason, second by Donna, to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three, and the twenty-three, twenty-four school calendar changes. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Both same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item E, approval of early childhood coordinator, action item enclosure number ten. Superintendent Sanju is requesting approval to hire an early childhood coordinator. Early childhood director duties will be assigned to community director Munchau. This position will replace the current ECFE secondary, secretary. Job descriptions is attached, Superintendent Sanju recommends approval of this new position and job description. Do I have a motion? Motion by Alicia.
I'm sorry.
Second by Clark. Any questions or concerns?
So by giving Matt more responsibility then, is that going to change his contact? Is it going to change his salary?
So thought process about all this is, how can we obviously get the coverage that we need? We have two vacancies. There's current vacancies as a director that was part-time, and then a vacancy that was a secretary that was a full, that was a part-time person down there as well. In reflecting with the staff, talking with the staff, and, and going through just the process of, of this and kind of looking at saying, you know, who do we think is going to be able to apply and, and get this? The idea was, is, hey, what, what if we hire a full-time coordinator? And that full-time coordinator can go ahead and, and operate under the idea of, of, you know, similar to how our youth rep coordinator works under community ed, similar to how our PAC coordinator works under community ed, and now how this coordinator can work with early childhood. And then you have, from a licensure standpoint, you have a community education director that would be able to be licensed to cover this. His contract is up at the end of the month, and so then that would be able to negotiate those duties. I think it would allow our, our budget to run more efficiently, potentially, on that. And I just think getting somebody in there full-time would be able to, to do this. The, the plan to me then would be to evaluate this after a year to see how things go. And if we certainly think that we need to get a director, I'd come to you guys and say, I need a director down there running things on a, on a day-to-day basis. I'm not sure who, who, who would we get? I, I'm trying to think of making sure that we have somebody that's in place. I think the, the coordinator role, we get some quality candidates that would be able to, to run that day-to-day operation. Matt has, through community education licensure and, and his training, has background in the early childhood realm, you know, in terms of budget. And as an administrator, he would be able to do the hiring, the firing, the, the evaluations, the budget, you know, those types of things that would come with an administrative role. The, the job description, if you've noticed, also includes some early childhood special education. And, and that's an opportunity for this person to, you know, make sure that those programs are running efficiently together. And, and go from there, so.
Chris, can you talk about the challenges that have been in, in trying to partner early childhood special education versus, because they're totally disconnected. And I think that's been a gap that has been identified.
And, and now, from a logistical standpoint, the, the kids are the same, right? But they fall under different categories, and the staff fall under different categories because our teachers in the early childhood special education, you know, are full-time teachers that are under the umbrella of Mr. Butler, who was our elementary principal slash child study coordinator. Where the teachers of ECFE are, are part-time people, and, and they're under the collective bargaining, but, but they also have their own, you know, language in the, in the contract, and they fall under the, the umbrella of the director. And so you have two departments, you know, wanting to work as one. In, in talking with, with the, the board of school administration here over the last couple of days, just to make sure that, that we're covered and, and all that kind of stuff. She echoed the same challenges that a lot of school districts have, but she applauded the fact that we are doing that, that, that our early childhood special education kids are in the classrooms with, you know, the, the general education students that are paying the tuition and, and, and having one program. But being able to, to have this person kind of say, hey, you're, you're running the day-to-day operations for all kids in early childhood, I think is, is an opportunity for us to, you know, take. And, and, and now, it doesn't matter who you are, you're here, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna service you. And they were doing that before, I want you to know that, they were doing that before. But, but this allows us, from a job description standpoint, to have this be a part of their job. And I think that's a benefit. Plus, it allows them to be on campus full-time when we didn't have that before.
The director position was point five in the past, or point seven-five?
Yeah, about point.
What Jen Monahan drew was, I believe it was point five, right?
How much was it?
Right now, she's point nine.
Point nine? Because we increase that incrementally as those student numbers grew, I believe.
Jen, you started at about point two-five, or point four-five. Alicia had been at a point seven-five, or five, or six, you know?
And she talked in addition to that, which was a separate piece of.
Which will also be a separate piece of this, you know, with these positions, we would still need to go out and find a, a early childhood family educator to run that program as well, which is a very part-time position, but, but depending on the schedule of how that gets fit, we'll be advertising for that and, and hopefully find somebody for that as well.
So just so you understand, so the coordinator is gonna fulfill those secretarial duties that the secretary did? And those non-high-ranking, supervisory responsibilities?
Correct.
And if you're in the job description, you've removed all of that that would then.
Yep. All the administrative duties would fall upon the director, which would be, in this particular case, Mr. Munchau because of his community education director's license. And then we would sit with him and need to negotiate, his contract is up, and we would need to negotiate his contract and, and find something that's, that's favorable for his additional duties.
So then, Mr. Munchau would be taking basically a position that is a little bit more than a half-time position. And then we still need to find another half-time position, and then we also need to find a teacher? Is that what you were saying?
The, the ECFE teacher that we're talking about isn't a part of this, that's a completely separate person. Alicia used to do that, but that would be a different person. The coordinator will basically be taking the place of the secretary, but have a coordinator role versus a secretarial role. And the coordinator role will have a few more responsibilities than the secretary. And they will be here full-time versus part-time before.
I think it did work.
So then the, the pay is gonna, I mean, so is it gonna be kind of a logic when it comes to the budget, or?
The budget will save money. Will save money with the budget. The coordinator position will, will be an independent contract, similar to how the early, or the PAC coordinator is a independent contract, similar to how the, the, the youth rep coordinator would be a separate contract for them. And so that's what this person would also be, would be a, a coordinator of early childhood. And then the director, who oversees all of Fund Four, would be the community education director. And, and early childhood falls under Fund Four.
I think it can work, you're gonna have to get a early childhood coordinator that's really good.
Organized and.
Very organized. I think, you know, Director Munchau is, is very well-suited to take on extra duties, but. but the first hire for the early childhood coordinator is gonna be very key, so.
I think that's true of many of the positions that we have pulled up. I think if this is approved, one thing that might be helpful for the board would be to see the flow chart that we have that shows Director Munchau as community ed director, and then the coordinators underneath, meaning Renee Johnson, like you said, correct? A PAC person, which is.
Jay Kelly.
And that also, this new position, if it's approved, I think that that would be helpful, you know, once again, when we do the pay equity. That's where I think we have that flow chart perhaps. That might be helpful for the board to see that again, if this is approved and just with any of the positions that we made, just to continue to see the visual on that, I think it helps some of the board members have a different time of some of their schedules.
I agree. We are already working on that. And if you remember back when I did the pay equity stuff in January, the one thing I wanted to do this summer is we needed to relook at our band grade schedules. There's a couple of, when our LPNs hadn't been dropped in there since we had done it. So I was looking at, you know, a meeting sometime in July with Donna and John up here on our personnel committee, just to kind of go through that update, make sure we have people in the right spot that matches our pay equity banding and grading, so we would review that. So we've been going through a lot of that as we've been talking about this change. Also, in contacting a few of my peers, this is a very similar model to a lot of district schools that got one community ed director, and then these different positions that fall underneath that run their programs, their daycare programs, their screening programs, those type of things. So we feel it's worth definitely giving it a try. Maybe it won't work. Maybe in two years we'll say, yeah, let's go back to something different. But we talked about it in the budget, but as you know, in the last two, three years, our school readiness has been running in the red. We're hoping this might be a way to kind of help that a little bit with some shift to some things, relooking at that budget, hopefully kind of getting that back on track and see where we can go from here. So it's a strong program. We just need to get those right people in place again to continue what we have going. We think by adding that additional three- to five-year-olds to our PAC, it's gonna be a positive thing to help some of those parents out. So we're kind of excited about that. Mr. Munchau has already worked on some of the details of all that extra piece of licensure that's to go as a licensed daycare. So I think he's got most of all that worked out. He's talked to his contacts on that program. So I think it could be an exciting change as we go forward and just continue, you know, to develop that model, integrating those two programs down there between special ed and regular ed students and just trying to make it stronger as we move along.
You have coordinators Renee and Jamie, right? The first year, a two-year contract, is that correct?
Correct. So this would put that person either, we'd have to, you know, if we wanted to get them on the same schedule, just do a one-year. You know, that would be something we'd have to look at once we get that person in mind to see how we want to set it up. But yeah, you're correct there. They started their second group.
I think that that would be my suggestion. My recommendation would be to make this a one-year so that it gets on the same cycle as the other two coordinators. And then also by doing that, if this position is approved, it would give the opportunity to see how it goes for a year. Like you said, to see if it's working or not, to eliminate the position that had to have. I think that will prove us to do that.
The other thing that we're finding, as Chris has gone through all this, is we really need another classroom down there. You know, we've talked.
Or two.
Or two. We've talked about, you know, we've talked about this for a number of years, but how do we get into more of that concept of having a daycare, full daycare, all day long? And then those kids can go to their preschool programs, go back to daycare. So there's a lot of ideas. We know with visiting Mr. Munchau, who now, you know, has little ones, he's well into with the daycare situation in our communities. And there's not a lot out there. I mean, we know there's a couple of them that are gonna be retiring or getting out of the daycare business. So you kind of have to start thinking, you know, is this a good chance to really look at how can we expand that to, you know, offer daycare, increase school, go back to daycare? There's a lot of pieces that fit into that. It's kind of exciting to think, is that a concept or something we want to continue to explore? But at this point, we don't have a classroom.
Yeah, there's no space, and that's a positive to Alicia and the work that she did over the years. The program has grown. When we built the facility down there, it was set for the day we opened it up. But now the program has grown. It's a really good program, and it will continue to be a really good program. But one of the things that we're missing when you compare it to some other school districts is that childcare component, and we just physically don't have a spot for them. But is the childcare component before preschool, after preschool, something that we can take a baby step in the right direction of providing for families? Because that'll allow them to have some options with transportation because now, hey, I get the transportation piece. It's a part of the reason, and that was part of the reason the program grew, was that we were providing those services. Well, unfortunately, with the cost of everything, those services now are needing to be cost. You know, you're needing to have the fee that comes along with it. And, you know, allowing them to be able to have an option for them, the parents to drop them off early. And when I was checking with other school districts, I said, do you have three-year-olds that get dropped off at six o'clock in the morning? Oh, yeah, we do. Because that allows them to then, and then you just work on that midday transportation, and that allows the cost to be a little bit less, you know, for those families as well. And so with this change, there's a lot of moving parts, but I hope that everybody understands and echoes the fact that it's all to try to provide the great service that we're providing, and then at the same time, balance it to make sure that our budget is where it needs to be. And sometimes those balancing acts are difficult to find, but we're truly trying to do that so that we can provide a great service to our children and our families.
So to get us back on track with item B and the coordinator position, do we need a friendly amendment to the motion that's been made comparing or each other coordinator? And the friendly amendment would be that it would be a one-year contract so that it is in coordination with the other coordinator positions and gives us the opportunity as a district to revisit that upon other cuts and so forth when you look at that?
I think that's fine. Alicia, do you have any issues with that? You made the motion.
No. Well, the teacher are applicants though. I, you know, the concern that I would have is that, you know, maybe who applies for that position would be considered kind of easier.
Good point.
It may, it may not. You know, I don't know. But I think it gives us as a district the flexibility at the end of the year, as was stated, that we would revisit it to see if it's working or not. And if that's the order that we want to keep it going. And also to see where that budget, as well as our overall budget, is after here.
I think most positions in school districts, especially in new position, I think they probably pretty much know it's kind of, you know, it can be cut at any time because that's, I mean, they're gonna know upon applying that this is a new position that we're, you know, that we're designing. So there is a potential that it could be cut or it could go forward. And I guess that just means that maybe we'll maybe get a more qualified person that is willing to put more effort towards to make sure that the program or that position does very well. You know, you never know, but I think most people that apply for positions like this kind of know it's, you know, if you're not.
Okay, if I'm on here, then I think I'll leave the motion as its answer. There's sort of a devaluation anyway. If it's not working, we can make a difference.
Well, so I made that as a friendly amendment, so I'll make sure you're saying no to that friendly amendment. Does that crack? I think it's your motion on the table. And so the friendly amendment is coming toward you to make the decision whether you want that as a friendly amendment or not. Not to put you on the spot, but it's your motion.
Sorry.
And, you know, and here would be another thing. Like I said, if my friendly amendment was not to put you on an upper position, is it something that could be tabled? I mean, the urgency or not urgency of the field of this.
I kind of would like the director, I need to help, I need help.
I mean, we have a motion. It's a thing. She either has to just pull her motion or say no. She would like a friendly amendment. We need to vote on this.
We need to vote on this.
Yeah, I would agree. I think we do need to vote on this tonight. I mean, we have two, you know, two vacancies, but trying to break it down to one and to continue on and make sure that we're ready for the fall. I think we do need to get this job posted. You know, I think we can present as, you know, a one-year contract so they potentially be on the same cycle as the other coordinators. But I don't necessarily think that we need to make an amendment and just leave it as is at this point.
Good. Yeah, that's one compromise that you can do is just provide them a one-year contract. Here's what the job is.
So the applicants will know at the beginning, it's a one-year contract?
Yep.
Is basically, that's basically what he's saying then is just.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, and that's what should be in this motion now. Because as this stays, it doesn't say that. I would mark it on the record as, as what we're saying we want to do.
You can add it in.
What's that?
You can add an amendment so that it specifically states it's a one-year contract. Potential for renewal in 2023, 2024.
Nothing, Tricia?
Yep.
Clark, please, go second.
Yeah, I'll second.
Good. All right, Ellen's on her off-level request, and I appreciate you guys worked on all this and had the conversation about it, and there's a lot going on there, pretty quickly too. So it was just a recent reservation, so it's time to look at everything and look and explore possible better options, so I do appreciate that. So at this time, I will, I have a motion by Alicia, second by Clark, with the amendment to approve the hiring of early childhood coordinator. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item A, request of approval of STEM trip 2024, action item in closure number 11. Request has been made by Amanda Cuckey for approval to move forward planning a June 2024 junior high STEM trip to Puerto Rico. It is recommendation of Superintendent Sandu to approve this request. Do I have a motion? Motion by John, you have a second? Second by Donna. To approve STEM trip to Puerto Rico in June of 2024. Any questions, Donna? You're done, I'll take. I have a motion by John, second by Donna, to approve the STEM trip to Puerto Rico in June of 2024. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Both same sign. Thank you. Item G, approve the IT contract, action item. Superintendent Sandu on school board negotiated director, Lacher, announced later, recommend approving Jeff Jensen's director of technology information systems two-year contract from July 1, 22, June 30, 24. Do I have a motion? I make a motion. I have a second. Second by Alicia. You got any details?
Yep. So no language changes for the director of technology contract, settled at a total package of 6.08% in the line with the other ones that we previously settled.
That's all the two years?
Yes, all the two years.
So what is the breakdown in terms of the [inaudible 00:07:52]. Just question. It's, you know, 6.08 for one year.
Yeah, 6.08 over the two years. I should have.
We don't want front-loaded contracts. You have to break them.
That's my fault. I should have it, and of course, it's PDF, so I want it. It is a 2.69 in year one and a 3.39 in year two.
Perfect. Any other questions for Alicia or Jamie? Here you're done. I got a motion by Jason, second by Alicia, to approve two-year contract with director of IT, Jeff Jensen, from July 1, 22 to June 30, 2024. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Both same sign. Motion carries. Item H, property liability, auto, workforce comp, and cyber or network security coverage insurance renewal. Action item in closure number 12. Business manager Sanders will review the school district's, has reviewed the school district's insurance coverage. She will provide more information Monday evening. And I'll stop right there.
All right. And we'll get into some fun stuff here, because everybody loves to talk about insurance. So our insurance package, the first part is the workforce comp coverage, as listed on your agenda there. This past year, we paid a premium of $43,433. The proposed premium for next year jumps 19%, goes to $51,601. Really nothing that we can do about this. It kind of is what it is based on your claims that you've submitted from your claims. They develop what they call a mod rate, and that's what calculates the premium. We've been with, SFM is the company that provides that coverage. Very, very good company to work with. They really take care of our claims efficiently and thoroughly. They follow through with anybody that's had a claim, so we've been very pleased. So no issues with that company. It's just, again, a high jump based on usage that we've had.
Sure. This workforce comp coverage is very similar to privacy sector. I think most of the school sector theoretically, you're still, we're paying, we have to pay that for what we have occurred for all of us.
Correct. Okay, the next part of the package then is the property liability and bottle. We are currently with a company called EMC. We work with, our agency is called Marshall McLennan. John Seifert is our agent. He's been to our meetings in the past. We bid insurance about every other year where I tell him, go out to the market, bid the market, and see what you can come back with for rates. So this was a non-bid year. I don't know that it would have mattered whole lot if it would have been a bid year because of what's happened in the market as far as building costs, construction costs. We've just seen a big increase in what's happening around the world. So I send to you a statement of values. I don't know if you had a chance to look at that, review it. If you have any questions on that, let me know. Since our building construction project was finished in 2017, we started taking a real closer look at this to make sure that we thought our values was where they should be. At that time, we had made a bigger jump on that because we knew the cost per square foot had gone up so much. We were originally looking at about a 4% increase in our values for this year. EMC came back and is requiring a 7% from what they've seen in the construction market. You know, building costs have just. You know, building costs have just, cost of materials, cost of labor, has gone up too much to stick with the 4%. So they required the 7% increase in that. So this breaks down to an increase going from $105,000 to $222,000 that we paid this year, up to $114,897, so about $115,000. So about an 8.9% increase on the property liability and auto. So not terrible. A lot of districts are seeing a lot higher numbers than that, but a little higher than I was hoping for. The last part of the coverage or the package is our cybersecurity coverage. So currently through EMC, we have a very, very limited policy. It's called Cyber Solutions. We pay a premium of $2,096. That's what we paid this year. That's what they're proposing for next year. In the past, or the past couple of years, we have not been able to get a network security policy. They didn't feel we had enough security measures in place in our district that they were willing to insure us for that network security policy. This year, we filled out three, four applications to try and get the network security coverage. I worked with Jeff Jensen on those security or those applications, quite the process to go through those. Came back with three bids. Besides EMC, kind of take EMC because they don't offer the network security coverage. They only offer the cyber solutions. Again, that's very limited, does not meet MSBA recommendations at all, doesn't even come close to what we would need for a full network breach. Quotes came back from a company called Cowbell. Their premium was $17,094. And they also, they've got another clause where they call if the company is not admitted or admitted, and what's that means, it hasn't been approved. Go back to my notes here. It hasn't been a fully approved policy, or the other two companies have, what's called admitted. So Cowbell is a non-admitted status, and the other two are admitted statuses. So then Axis was the second one, came in at $11,669. And then CFC is actually the company that is being recommended by our agent. It's also one of the two that gives us the most coverage, that Cowbell one that has the most or the highest premium, only had a coverage of about a million, and the other two companies came in at 1.5 million. So a little better coverage, again, a lot more expensive coverage when you go with the network security versus just the cyber solution. So that premium comes in at $10,470. So what would happen is you wouldn't renew the cyber coverage for that $2,096. That would go away from EMC, and then you could approve one of these three policies for the full network security coverage. As much as I hate insurance dollars, I think the network security is what we need to go with. We need to just step up our game a little bit and make sure that our network is that good coverage. We do a really good job. The tech department does a great job of doing what we can, but it only takes one little breach, and you've got somebody that takes over that full network, and then you're in trouble, and it could be very, very expensive. You're easily looking at a, you know, sometimes a simple breach, you're up to $300,000 to get, to buy that back from whoever has breached your network and also shuts you down. Shutting us down could be not good, to anybody that's been through any of that. So I would recommend dropping the EMC cyber coverage and going with the coverage for network security from CFC for that $10,000. So you're looking at about an additional premium cost of $8,000 once you do the net difference between the two. So the coverage with SFM for work comp, staying with EMC for the property auto liability at $114,000, and then the network security coverage with CFC for $10,000. That would be my recommendation. So questions that you have on insurance coverage? This will be effective July 1. Our current policy ends June 3.
Must know it was on the agenda because I got a spam email that I forwarded to Jeff Jensen yet this morning, so.
Through your GSL?
Through GSL. It came from a county, and we supposedly had won lottery or something like that.
Congratulations. Well, and just so you guys are aware as well, we're working with our local collaborative, and there's going to be some trainings, and there's opportunities for our staff to continue to get trained and updated on those phishing scams. And so there are those steps that are in place, that is a program we're working with through our collaborative. And when you have those things in place, that allows you to even get some better coverage as well. So you are taking the proactive approach as best that you can.
In the network security, as we talked about, what we couldn't do is...
Couldn't do the coverage, yeah.
It was just a local district, a few part of the road that had several hundred thousand dollars that they had to come up with, so.
The big, one of the big things they look for is what they call a multi-factor.
Multi-factor?
Yes, that you have to log into for two times. So right now, we already have that through our co-op. So in our district office, when we log into Smart Finance, Smart Payroll, when we click on the icon to open it, then you have to verify it on your phone before it allows you to enter it. So we're already doing some of that dual stuff.
So what's your opinion?
We've, we've had Jeff change. We're staff now, every three months, it's set at right now, has to change your password. Before, we hadn't changed it for years. Not all staff like that change, because they don't want another new password, but we've said no. Quite, trying to do quite a bit of that. And like Chris mentioned, we are looking at additional staff training, so people are more aware of those phishing scams that are going on. So we're trying. It's sad that it's come to that we have to have that much coverage for network security business. That's what we're dealing with right now. And if you notice anything on that statement of values that you question, please give me a call in as we look at some of those values on our building and finances.
All right, at this time, I'll entertain a motion. Please indicate in your motion how you want to, how you want us to proceed.
So, sorry, we're...
So to accept the SFM workman's comp, the EMC for the property liability auto insurance, and the CFC for the network, and to get rid of this cyber coverage.
Thank you, Donna and John. I have a motion by Donna, second by John, to approve or no property liability auto works, auto workman's comp, network security, and our cyber coverage insurance coverage as presented. And Donna had stated workman's comp through SFM, EMC for the liability, and then the CFC for our network coverage. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Both same sign. Motion carries. Item I, fundraiser report for 2122, information only, enclosure number 13. Fundraising report for 2122 school year is attached. No action is required. Item J, fundraiser request for 2223, action item enclosure 14. Requests for fundraisers to be held during the 2223 school year are attached. The board approves fundraisers for after June and January meeting. Superintendent Sandu recommends approval of the request as presented. Do I have a motion? Motion by Clark, second by Alicia. Any questions? All right, here you're done. I have a motion by Clark, second by Alicia, to approve the request for fundraisers to be held during the 2223 school year. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Both same sign. Motion carries. Item K, call for few bids. Action item Business Manager Sandu recommends calling for transportation few bids for 2223 school year. And those will be placed in a legal newspaper and letters will be sent to the local vendors. Do I have a motion? Motion by John, do I have a second? Second by Jamie. Do call for few bids for 2223 school year. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Both same sign. Motion carries. What are we doing now right now?
One thing I was going to mention, but you kind of went too fast, we do need to do this because this starts July 1 going forward. But the one thing we're looking at now, started the discussion and we'll continue it, with 4.0, you know, to the old county shock area. We talked about the possibility of putting in a fuel tank. We've talked about that years ago, but the current location just doesn't allow for that. There's not enough room to be in the railroad tracks, the building, there's certain limitations when you put in a 10,000-gallon fuel tank. So we're going to have that discussion again. Started, a 10,000-gallon fuel tank isn't cheap to put in, so it would be something, we need to put out the details on it, but definitely some potential money savings when you can lock in a full tanker. You do save some money. They've locked in some tankers for some of their districts for this next year at under $4, like 312, they locked a couple in. So we're going to continue that discussion and bring that back to you, but you know, fuel, the cost of gas right now, which is how all their buses are treating gas. You can lock that in at 3 something compared to 5, you can do that, and you see there are a big savings there. So the expense from coming is putting in that fuel tank. Does the district do it? Does 4.0, will we work that agreement out on 4.0, buy the tanker, does the district buy the tanker? So those are a number of things that we'll continue to have a discussion with. So I think there's some possibilities there. There could also be a cost that will put in that, but we'll continue to explore that. Set up a meeting of the people that is from 4.0. We'll just keep you informed. As of right now, they still won't move into the property until January, unless the county's out before that. So we'll continue to explore that and keep you updated on where that ends up.
The county hasn't started building, they're building that soon.
I haven't heard that they have, so we'll see where it goes.
All right. Item L, select auditor, action item enclosure number 15. Business Manager Sandu has reviewed the scope, limitations, and management responsibilities of the audit agreement with Clifton Larson Allen LLP. He is a recommendation that we appoint Clifton Larson Allen LLP as a school district auditor for the fiscal year 22. Total estimate fee for 2122 audit is $29,400. The total fee for 21 was $27,203. Do I have a motion? Motion by Alicia, do I have a second? I'll second that.
But you can see it's not getting cheaper. We went out to the school a lot with those numbers. This year, there's not much we can do on it. We might want to think about, just because of the dollar amount, trying to bid it out next year and see what you could get. There is nothing against Clifton Larson Allen. They've done a great job for us. They've handled the history, you know, 15 years now plus before I came. So it's nothing against them, but it's kind of over that $25,000 mark, we should be bidding these type of things. The reason we're seeing the increase for that is the new gas requirements. They keep putting more and more on districts and auditors that require them to dig deeper into schools. The new one that's coming up is going to be leases, so any lease we have, including software leases, are going to have to be audited. All the ESR dollars, because that's all federal dollars, has increased their time because that has to be audited differently. So, you know, the increase in price, it all comes from laws change that come out of the gas before to handle the fact we've got an additional federal dollars. I'd be real surprised if, once the federal dollars are done, if we see the audit prices go down much, probably it's going to happen, which will actually be a little bit. So audit is scheduled for the first week of August, and we will, as soon as we end June 35th here, our own staff will be very busy getting, getting the information ready for them and getting ready for the audit.
Thank you, Michelle. Any other questions, though? Here I am, motion by Alicia, second by Jason, to appoint Clifton Larson Allen LLP as the school district's auditors for fiscal year 2022. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Both same sign. Item M, 2122 budget revision. The Senator.
All right, now some more fun stuff. Budget. No big surprises. We're going to go through the revised budget numbers first a little bit and some of the explanations that go with this. I meant with the finance committee in May, and we haven't had many changes since then. So again, no big changes. Budget the last couple of years and the year going forward. It's been the biggest moving target I've ever had to work with when it comes to school budget. So I'm going to go through some of the revisions and how it accounts for the changes listed before you in your agenda and the package that I gave you for the 2122 revised budget. You'll see the budget that was approved back in last June, and then in red, I hope I gave you colored copies, then you'll see the revised date here each month of June 13, 22, with the revised number of the year. So we'll kind of start with the general fund. You can see both the revenues and expenditures, you know, quite a big increase on that. So those changes are mainly due to all of the ESR money. When we did the budget last June, we didn't out for, because we didn't have a final plan in place of how much expenditures, how much revenue was going to be contributed to ESR, so we didn't include that on either side of the revenues or expenditures. So the changes have to do with the ESR. Another big change that amounts to that difference is that technology connectivity grant that we received. That was almost $350,000. That is now part of the budget. Negotiation settlements, some of those came in higher than we had anticipated when we did the budget numbers last June, so those are reflected in the changes. Overall increased cost, increased fuel cost, increased supply cost, increased whatever we try to do. Those are reflected in the budget as far as anything that we spent, you know, the current prices that are in there. Decreased enrollment, a reflection of the change in the ADMs from when we first approved the budget last June to where we're at now. Looking at those ADMs, this revised budget is right around the 1,450 ADMs. We might be ending a little bit less than that. Treasury has submitted our first end-of-year March submission, so we just started looking at ADM numbers now, and then looking for those errors, and we'll be updating that as we go along the next couple of months through the audit process. That might be a little less than that. One thing that came up last week, a week and a half ago, if you remember, we put in an order for a van last October. We have two vans that are coming that are going to have to come off of rotation, and one was supposed to come off in March. YOT let them continue to use that through the end of the year. The new van was supposed to be here in May. I got word last week that they haven't started building those vans yet. And so they have no, no explanation of when that van will be here. We then placed in January an order for the second van, thinking that would come into the FY23 fiscal year. That, we have no word on that either, so I don't know when that happens. So that $35,000 I had budgeted in the FY22 budget for the van, I drilled that out. Now I have $70,000 in FY23 budget per van, so it might end up coming both next year. We might get one, two, or none. We'll have to kind of wait and see where those go. And the changes that we've made in the LTFM projects, our facility projects that we've done during the year, when we switch them in the summer, if things get done in June, or they get chugged to July, so we kind of clean all that up. So that's kind of a summary of all the changes in the general fund. Food service fund, you can see, you know, some changes there as well, but pretty close changes on both the revenues and the expenditure side again. That has to do with the changes in the reimbursement rates. We saw those changes happen once last summer and then again January. So those are reflected in the revenue side. We also got some additional money. They called in, we got about $30,000 that came from food chain supply issues, so we got $30,000 extra revenue on that. On the expenditure side, you're just seeing that food costs creeping up slowly and slowly, or maybe a little more faster than slowly. So some of that is accounted for that change as well. Still looking at a positive fund balance in food service, which, you know, goes back to, do we have to raise those rates, or not raise the rates? And then again, we need to go forward to maintain, you know, keep things level in there. They are looking at a couple of equipment replacements for this next year in food service. We've got some of them back coming up as well. Community service, quite a bit of a change there, not quite of a bit, but enough that you can see the difference there, both on revenues and expenditures, a little bit more on the expenditure side. So then, some of that accounted for, you know, when we started the budget process last... May and June, we really didn't know where some of our programs were gonna be going, are we gonna be able to do some of the youth programs, what was COVID gonna do to that? We spent about thirty-five thousand dollars more in youth rep salaries than what was originally budgeted, so that was a good thing. We had, were able to run some of those programs, we, you know, purchase equipment through those. We had an additional about twenty-two thousand dollars in salary in our school readiness area of that budget. And then we made that purchase of that cardio equipment, and fifty thousand of that came out of the expenditures as well. The other big thing on the community ed side of that fund is the trips. If you remember during the discussion, there's a New York trip happening in July. That wasn't all budgeted for last June, we didn't know if that was gonna happen. So that's an increase of about forty thousand dollars to that budget. Of course, a lot of that's coming in on the revenue side as well. And just a reminder, in that community service, on this budget sheet, you only see fund for community service. So the components of community service are community ed, school readiness, ECFE, non-public, and preschool screening. So those are all the components that fall under the community ed fund. When we do the audit, each of those are looked at differently because they each have a different closing account, so they each have a different fund balance, but one can carry the other one, so it's a total we're fine. Remember, the school readiness budget has been running deficit, so that's the components of that community service fund. Fund seven, in debt service, not much change is there because that's all based on our bond schedules as far as what the payments are. Sometimes a little bit of change on the revenue side that has to do with some of the tax abatements that come through that we aren't aware of at the start of the school year. Two big changes, if you look at our student activities accounts in fund ten activities and the student activities fund twenty-one. Difference in those two is the fund ten activities are controlled more by the principals. The student activities are student-driven, those need to be approved by the students. So like FFA comes out of student activities fund twenty-one, so anything they do as an activity in FFA, we've got a student signature that signs off for that, which means the advisor is discussing these expenses, these revenues with the students. So that's the difference between the two is fund ten activities still for students, but it's more controlled by the principal or the athletic director. Student activities is more student, student-approved. When we started last year, no idea fundraisers were gonna happen, how many fundraisers were gonna happen, were they gonna be profitable, not profitable? We also had the band choir trip, so you can see the big difference, especially in the expenditure side of the fund ten activities. And then if you look at the student activities, huge change in that budget, original budget to the revised budget between what happened from when we budgeted, not knowing what was gonna take place until the final numbers. Scholarship account fund eighteen is pretty much, you know, little changes there, we just kind of tweaked. I think that's all I've got on the revised budget. So I don't know if you want to approve that or if you want me to go into the twenty-two, twenty-three, if you want to approve this one first. You have questions on the revisions?
Michelle, the STEM trip that we approved for twenty-twenty-four?
Yep.
Would that be a fund ten or a fund twenty-one?
We run that on a fund ten. Some of the fund twenty-ones, I can mention, are FFA, art club, science club, your class, ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth grade class funds run out of there. History club, we don't have as many as we used to, like our elementary classes, we run them out of fund ten, so the parents are paying their ten dollars for their, you know, their year, that covers kind of their class parties and their holiday parties and those type of things. That runs under the elementary, same as the elementary fundraisers all go to fund ten, and then the principals choose, let's do some of this, like their box that money comes into fund ten, and then each of the teachers get a portion of that to use on things for their classrooms.
Is close-up also fund ten?
No, close-up is a twenty-one.
But the STEM one you said is?
We run that out of, because we really don't incur an expense for that because students are paying for that. So we might once in a while get something that falls under that, but that, students pay for that trip.
Okay, so just one more tech for certification, so close-up is fund twenty-one?
Yep.
And the STEM trip is fund ten?
Yep.
Thank you.
Sometimes the difference goes into if there's an advisor for that. So like the STEM trip, there is no, I mean, there's somebody that falls on it, but it's not a paid position. Here, close-up, FFA, they have paid advisors too, so sometimes that goes into it. So the other thing to mention on the revised budget, primarily the, the general fund, is we will be looking at, right now estimated about twenty-two, twenty-three percent fund balance, so we'll still be above our fund balance policy, which is a good thing, but audit will determine where those final numbers all go and how we end up. And as you know, where we end up is where we start with twenty-two, twenty-three, so we'll get into that on the next one. But it's still very healthy, even though it looks like, you know, we're maybe spending more. We have been spending for a number of years, so that's okay because of our fund balance, and our goal is to run programs, you know, for our kids as best we can and watch that fund balance.
Okay, at this time, I think I'll explore a motion for item M for the twenty-one, twenty-two budget revisions. Motion by Clark, seconded by John, to approve the twenty-one, twenty-two budget revisions as presented. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Both same side. Thank you. Item N, twenty-two, twenty-three preliminary budget action item.
All right, you'll have another sheet on this that will just have all the numbers in black at this point. It's our preliminary budget, and I always like to mention it, by law, you have to approve a budget prior to July one, so if you wouldn't like these numbers tonight, you can say, don't bring me back different numbers, that would be fine, but we'd have to have a meeting before July one, or we can't incur any expenses. So that is in law that you have to have a budget approved. Definitely, again, very preliminary because we have so many changes that happen over the summer, different things that happen go on that get reflected in in the revised budget, so this is by law. So I'm not gonna go through each, each fund, each line there, you can kind of read those for yourself, but what I'll go through is a little bit of the assumptions that we currently have in the general fund, well, kind of a couple of the other funds too. But in the general fund, right now on the formula allowance is at two percent, and that's what's in current law. As you know, legislators have not taken any action on their budget surplus, they have not been called to a special session, so at this point, the only thing we're getting is what was passed last year on the formula allowance, which was two percent. Also included in the assumptions is a decrease of our students of about twenty-five. All our projects at this point that have been approved and are ongoing, those are included in the budgets. We've included ESR three dollars at this time is what we know of our plan of how we're gonna spend those. We're gonna have a little balance of some ESR two dollars that we'll finish up, and we have those accounted for as well. The title budgets, we just got the allocations, I know it was on Bill's report, bill of doing report, those allocations came through, and they were telling us to figure a five to ten percent decrease in our title budgets, it came in an eleven percent decrease in funding. So that was a good news, and now we're in the process of relooking at Bill's staff that he's got assigned to title and who we might have to move. It's also gonna depend on how much we end up with this year left in title, we're allowed a twenty-five percent carryover, so we have to kind of finish that out this year, see how much we carry over to, if it's gonna be able to cover the staff that he currently has scheduled, so we might have to make some adjustments there. We have a few negotiations that don't have to be completed yet. There's increases for TRA included in the budget, TRA rate changes from eight point three four percent to eight point five five percent as a district expense. Fuel cost, utility cost, product cost, insurance cost, some of that is accounted for, not all of it, I think we're gonna, my budget's gonna fall short, especially on fuel cost at this point. Inflation is just going a little bit higher than what we've hoped for, so that is driving some of those moving targets when it comes to utilities and fuel cost. We just found out effective July one, the mileage reimbursement, when staff go to a workshop, the AD goes to something, the mileage rate is increasing from fifty-eight and a half cents to sixty-two and a half cents. Doesn't sound like a lot, but when you start paying staff for a lot of workshops, that's gonna affect the staff development budget as well. So those are the assumptions right now built into that general fund. On the food service, back to what we hope was a normal year, part of the national school lunch program, they have not released our rate reimbursement rates yet, so we have to see how that's gonna affect it. So we've made some assumptions for additional food costs, but not on the revenue side because we don't know if the feds will update that reimbursement rate or not. The community service fund right now, as we've talked about quite a bit tonight, is the kind of tricky one. Mr. Munchout does a great job with his budgeting for me, so he's got his portion, what was his portion, the community ed piece, the field house piece, that's all locked into place. So some of our unknowns right now are the school readiness, the ECFE, preschool screening, you know, who are we gonna get for coordinators, and then work on Matt's contract, what will Matt's contract look like, what will the new contract look like for this new position? So those things will have to work out, and we'll make sure we're falling into that bunch of. Debt service again, based on the debt service schedule, scholarships count based on our estimate, and then your student activities are based on estimates at this point as well. So looking at all these estimates, taking into account where we hope to end this year's fund balance, we're gonna end, I hope, right at a twenty percent fund balance. So we're kind of right on that edge. When we met in May, I was at about a nineteen, nineteen and a half percent. I've reworked all the numbers, it comes to twenty percent again, the fuel cost, some of those things having a little worry, but if we end up at, you know, a twenty-three percent this year, that gives us a little wiggle going into next year, but definitely something we're gonna have to watch, if those rates, you know, how many field trips happen, those type of things, we have to start looking at those reductions or reductions someplace else of things we can control more than the staffing. So that third sheet that I gave you is just, you know, the pie chart and more of an explanation when I talk about the different categories within the general fund, for example. We always talk about the salaries and benefits, purchase services, supplies and materials, capital expenditures, so you can just kind of see what falls into that, those categories, so that's just kind of for your information, it kind of helps to see with the pie chart, the biggest part of our expenditure budget, of course, is salaries, and then it breaks down from there, so you can just read that as you have time. The backside just includes the revenue and the same breakdown of how much revenue comes in from the state, from property taxes, federal aids, and local revenues.
Anything else?
No, I'll be quiet.
Okay.
Do you have questions?
Thank you for all the information, Michelle.
Yep, and, you know, if there's ever anything that you wanna see presented differently, you know, any other type of reports, please let me know, I'd be glad to run anything that could help you better understand some of this, and it gets very complicated, and I said since last couple of years ago, I mean, it's been very difficult.
I'm glad to have you here doing it.
If you have a feeling or if you make it easy for us to understand it.
Item M, twenty-two, twenty-three preliminary budget, do I have a motion? Motion by Alicia to have a second. I'll second that. To approve the twenty-two, twenty-three preliminary budget, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Both same side. Motion carries. Item L, resolution, resolution to initiate fall school board elections, action item closure number sixteen. It is, it is necessary for the school board to adopt a resolution to initiate the fall school board election. The school district will hold general election on November eighth, twenty-twenty-two to elect three school board members for terms of four years. The board members whose terms are expiring are John Lundby, Jason Lindman, and Alicia Luckherr. Candidate filing period for general election is August second, November twenty-two through August sixteenth. August second, twenty-twenty-two through to August sixteen, twenty-twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Motion by John, seconded by Donna. To adopt a resolution relating to election of school board members. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Both same side. Item B, first reading of policies, action item. Is the recommendation of the policy committee to bring back the following policies for adoption at the next school board meeting? Two oh six, public participation in school board meetings and claims about persons at school board meetings and/or dad privacy considerations. Two eleven, criminal or civil, civil action against school district, school board member, employee, or student. Or fourteen, mandated, mandated recording of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse. Four twenty-three, employee-student relationships. Five nineteen, interviews of students by outside agencies. Five thirty-two, use of peace officers and crisis names to remove students with IEPs from school grounds. Six oh three, curriculum development. Six oh four, instructional curriculum. Six oh five, alternative educational services. Six oh six, textbooks and instructional materials. Six oh seven, organization of grade levels. Six oh eight, instructional services, special education. Six eleven, homeschool. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Motion by Clark, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alicia. To bring back policies listed above for adoption at the next school board meeting. Discussion. Hearing done, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Both same side. Item Q, resolution, resolution to accept donations. Is the recommendation of Super Ten Sadiu to adopt a resolution to accept donations? Do I have a motion? Motion by John? Seconded by Donna. To accept, accept the list of donations, that's a, and a very nice list of our local community. All in favor to accept the resolution, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Both same side. Motion carries. Item R is stop payment approval. Super Ten Sadiu recommends approval for business manager Sanders and assistant business manager Hammer's to grant, to be granted approval through signed stop payment order request through security bank interest company. Do I have a motion? Motion by Donna? Do I have a second? Seconded by John.
Well, this is just a change that's coming from the security bank. So in the past, we don't get too many checks where we have to stop payment on anymore, it's mostly due to a lost check, but somebody said, oh, I lost my check, we need to stop payment on it, and now all of a sudden, they won't let Donna or myself sign that, it's supposed to be one of the three officers on the board. I said, my officers don't come in to sign these, so they said, if we have something in writing, that they would allow us to continue to do what we've been doing for twenty years, but they just need something in writing, so that's why this just kind of came up today.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you for the explanation. Motion by Donna, seconded by John, to approve the business manager Sanders and assistant business manager Hammer's for signed stop payment orders request from security bank interest. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye. Both same side. Motion carries. Item investments miscellaneous, now at this time?
Oh, I'm gonna do two, go ahead.
Yours on projects?
Nope.
All right, mine's on projects, which I didn't really talk about, but one I wanted to mention because you maybe noticed it, that you probably wondering what's going on. So FFA has been putting up some new raised garden beds, and now where the old ones were by the FFA, little shed that's down there, Rebecca Pastries kind of initiated this project, we kind of wanted to get something going again, so she took the initiative, and she's had kids out there, she's worked with new birth, they started them Tuesday, I think, and they were putting the finishing, the cat blocks on today, or they get them done Friday. No, I think they finished them today, and so they're gonna still try to get some plants in there planted, she was working on getting some donations from some of the local greenhouses to get that done, so you see that down there, if you walk that trail, take a look at them, they're really nice. She had said, we're gonna spend a little more on the FFA and do the higher raised beds rather than down on the ground the way they were before, so we won't see a lot of produce coming out of them yet this year just because of the lateness, but some of her kids are gonna start planting, so that, that's kind of a nice, nice improvement to see happening down there. So we've got a lot of other So we've got a lot of other projects that are happening coming up. I was going to give you a more thorough update in July, but, you know, some of the things that are going on at Lakeside, the classrooms that are getting the new ceilings. Those rooms have all been demoed, the old ceilings are out. So we're already starting to work on the new ceilings going in there, as well as the bathrooms at Lakeside. The last stage of our auditorium stage lighting has been already completed. They've started the heat patches at the stadium with all the asphaltings that's been completed. And we don't have a date yet, but they'll be coming back to do the seal coating on those. I don't have a date on the track resurfacing, that will happen. We've been working on the concrete. The unit beds at the level that we're getting are supposed to be shipped this week. Let's keep our fingers crossed. Still no word on the rooftop unit at the high school, when that's going to be here. And then the end of June, they'll be starting to work in the field house on the floor. So very busy, lots of stuff going on. They got the purple gym wax today. So that one is, they'll have that one done. We're cutting down on some of the coatings of wax this year because of the trace of the product. So not all gyms are going to have the two, three coats like they normally get. So it's a choice we had to make, you know, what can we cut? And I said, well, let's get one good coat on there and that will have to do it for this year. So that's what I've got.
And I just wanted to add, at the end of the year, we celebrated some retirements and want to especially acknowledge Sandy Sensky, Sue Bouch, Renee Lynch, and Heidi Nelson. Between those four, we had close to 70 years of experience that we were saying congratulations and thank you and best wishes on their retirement. So, thank you.
I just wanted to remind the board that you need to get your super unit evaluations in because we need to get them on the July term, all right? So please make sure you get them done before you go on vacation. Thank you.
Thank you for that reminder, Donna. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Sure.
Motion by Clark, second.
Second.
Seconded by Alicia, do adjourn.
Aye.
7:55 PM, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.